Okay, Michael, welcome. Ladies and gentlemen, may the Lord make us successful. Do you join our cause, Lord?
I last state of America through the Republic for which it stands one nation, one nation, one God, one God, one justice.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Burdina.
Here.
Mr. Douglas.
Here.
Ms. Corsey.
Here.
Mr. Tussell.
Here.
Mr. Tardy.
Here.
Let's see, what do we got? The owner is here from Prime Rose Estate. Dan has been tabled in Meadows two section is also off the agenda. So, Mike, why don't you go ahead and talk to him?
The first Prime Rose Estate's agenda makes some social, local and regular needs a full improvement. The applicant, Joe Catalani, is requesting sketch plan review associated with the development of a 39,000 square foot indoor outdoor recreation facility in a 9.3 acre lot located in a high intensity commercial district under section 269-5 of code of the town of Webster.
Does anybody here like resent this? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, walk through it.
Hi, I'm Joe Catalani from Dings and Lakes, I guess that's the name, but so far it might be Great Lakes Pickleball, we're not quite sure, but we're looking to kind of capitalize on the fastest growing sport in America right now, which is pickleball. And so you'll see these places starting up throughout the states. It is by far the fastest growing sport in what was once kind of created by the entire region of Florida, is now changing. We have a date for pickleball, 35 years old, just 135 years old. The national champion last week, when he made his Florida, was 17 years old. So it's getting younger and younger. It's very active for all different kinds of levels. So we're looking to build a kind of a family where I can place out in Webster. We've spoken with Josh and Erica and met with Tony before regarding a different site and there was a question regarding the park. And I'm actually glad that we had that meet because it made me think, you know what? If we don't, if we jump to a different site where even though, you know, a lot of the parking is pretty strict in Webster and most everybody has their names, we switch to a spot where we would need them. We switch to a spot that would give us 250 car parking and more. So our hopes are to build an indoor-outdoor facility. Have a small rest time inside, have 14 pickleball courts inside, probably six to eight outdoors along with some other activities for young kids, maybe regional sports.
Well, this, earlier you were talking, you know, there's a lot of water in there right now, what's the deal with that?
So they did a wetland delineation. They did a wetland delineation back there which has been set up from JU for the state D E C. But the back end where the building is being built, where all the courts and stuff are not included yet, they've updated that somewhere. There's a little bit in the front where the swale is and they'll, you know, I imagine they'll pipe that and build a parking around it, but not just the time for the bed which are meant for, you know, water irrigation. More of the water, more of the wetland issue is a lot going east.
Working would be right across the street.
Yeah, just like, exactly like Lowe's. Right across the way would be parking, you'd walk across the feeder road and you'd walk right into it, so just like safety first.
Actually, the design of your renovation is square trapezoid.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I didn't, we didn't come out and give you a unreasonable building right off the bat. We decided that we wanted to build something that was kind of eye-catching not only to you, but to our customers. We plan to entertain a lot of family back there and it'll all be, all those canopies are lit up, lit up in the back. We've reached out to our neighbors, to Ann's and the Lowe's and Reddick's.
Okay, so you're here for a sketch plan, so I want the board to look at it and come and say, the main thing as we spoke, why don't you have somebody representative here, obviously from?
Yes, Dale.
From the Heckylords. Because one of the things years ago, God, it's probably 20 years ago now, there was a curb cut approved by New York State to go out onto the 104 feeder lane.
Right.
Now that's been kind of gone for years. We've never brought it up, never discussed it because there's not that many significance to this.
My understanding, yeah, my understanding.
Smaller projects. But now there's a point where we have to say, wait a minute. We have good grip on this, so at what point can we do something? So that is something I think we need to resolve along with this project.
My understanding, Dale speaks to it, is that the Heckylords back then in the eighties were hoping to get the mall that around it went down.
No, 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 no.
No? I thought that's why that feeder road went up there.
Don't go there, please. No, no, no. I remember what the hell I had for breakfast, but I remember that.
One of the plans was build a mall there.
Maybe, that was, the timing may not have been ironic, like, I think it was, as opposed to.
Leonard Dodge wanted to build the other one, Heckylords, you know, back when the history goes, believing it's all right here, it's been.
Yeah, probably. You know, most of the people there were not around.
But the curb cut, the curb cut was required at the time when St. Anne's got approved, where the nursing home. That's when that got approved. Simultaneously, the road was designed, was that Black Cherry, is that called?
Yeah.
Black Cherry was designed across from the school to be able to come across that area and hit your property and exit onto the feeder which will eliminate school buses on Ridge Road and eliminate a lot of problems, the traffic problems in that area. That was the intent of that. Nothing to do with the law, though. Don't go there with that.
Okay. But I think our point is that we don't think that makes sense anymore to extend that to the 104 feeder road because there isn't, there isn't going to be the traffic that made the plans before. It's just the small developments like pickleball, this doesn't seem to make sense to us at this point, the cost for doing that. So that's an issue we'd like to figure out what makes sense there.
I agree with you, Dale. It is a big expense, but that's why we've kind of let this thing go and go and go. We didn't bother with it, you know, with a lot of the smaller places they've gone in, Popeyes and Dairy Queen, you know, they got their own exit over there, so we never brought any of that up there. Now we're getting on the interior, hopefully you do sell some of these places in there. But at what point, I mean, does it have to be right now? I don't know, because of his feelings, but I think we need to just get a resolution. When can we do this? At what point? Because if I'm recalling it, in the resolution, it don't work. Any further development on that property deemed necessary to put this connection in. So we let it go, so at what point can we do it? I think that's the crux of this whole thing.
Okay, I don't have an answer to that.
All right, okay, so I think this is a great project and everything, it's got, you know, it's good going in, and again, I think you have to get this year resolved. If it's not right now, is it next year? When can we, I think you've got to get an answer to that before this gets approved. When can we come up with a timeline to complete that whole project?
I believe, I believe people received a letter from, you know, senior home, you know, that they really do not want.
Yeah, that isn't their call. That's why the road was put there with a dead end, so if you continue, it goes right down the fence. That's why it was put there, so the road can connect onto your property. That was the intent of that. When Benny Mullen DiTosa was the CEO of St. Anne's at the tag, she knew, she was well aware of it at the time, well, now that's, you know, 20 some years ago. Things changed, but that was still gotta be done. The idea was to eliminate traffic and that's part of the design of the overall area for the town. I know you can't answer to that, I'm not looking for an answer, but you guys need to get together. That's, I think what we've got to do is get a solution to that.
I think the existing roadway between Lowe's and DJ's has accomplished a lot that kept traffic off of Ridge Road.
Yeah, well, another reason that road's there too, by the way. Yeah. That was an, yeah, I had another story.
Yeah.
Okay.
So in the, in that resolution from the town, from the town to Lowe's, they said the developer may be requiring a building. So what you're saying is you guys walked through?
Did you connect through?
Yeah.
That was the intent? That's why we put the word not the St. Anne's, they could have added, like Josh was saying, they could have added their parking, their driveway, that road coming in at their parking lot, but no, it had to be extended all the way back. So people knew this is going someplace, you know, a subdivision, you saw that, you know. People say, well, you know, a kid's got his basketball there, you know, that's nice, but that road is, can we continue? That's what I said.
So I guess that's something for the Heckylords to further the town.
I don't know, the board feels that, I mean, they say whether or not you're aware, I don't know, but we've got to get some kind of synergy for it.
So if they ask, extend it up to where is this clarification? How far was the intention to extend it in the fashion of the show supposed to go up to that road that connects between DJ's and Lowe's?
I have a map of the line.
When it comes, it comes from St. Anne's, you know, next to Lowe's, and then it crosses going north.
Yep.
Meanders a little bit of an angle and then over and to the expressway feeder.
Okay. The front is road.
You got a barrier behind these things up?
Yep, basically one of the gouges.
Yeah, actually, you can show us.
Yeah. Well, there's the, there's Lowe's, this is the end, so it'll come up through here, DJ's and two.
But right now, right now.
I think that's what the intention was.
Right now, the road design isn't too important, it's just a timeline for that.
Yeah.
So you want to, want to see what you can do with that, Dale? Come up with something, talk to whoever's there. Okay? Board members, any, actually, here is for a sketch review, is anybody have any concerns or interest?
I just have some questions. So Lowe's is trucking access being right there running to your property?
Yes.
Is that road remaining? Is there anything that can be?
It actually is a.
Is there an easement there?
There is an easement, that's a truck turnaround for the entire development, not just so those kind of incentivized on it, but it is actually for the entire development for a truck turnaround.
Okay. And sometimes they gave it all from the back where their storage is. The sketch plan is going off the, you know, substantial parking across the street. Is there any way can we push the building a little bit more south and do an idiot parking in the front? Like you say, if you have any elderly or needs to get closer to the building.
I don't sound super proud of that. I think it was 20 feet right now, we should, should, we could find a spot for that. It's a good idea.
Is that road there, is that common, is that only the common that road or?
Right, it's not dedicated.
Maybe someone's considered somehow slow down a little bit traffic there because you're going to have contractors coming through there, if you have kids or others coming or crossing the road to get into the building, is it going to be speed room or something to slow down a little bit? Or does it mean crossing is part of the concept there?
Speed bump's not a bad idea. They, they put that, I think they put that little turn of road there right up to where it's just like that.
That's what I can do. So also we're interested is the building and a timeline for the curb cut.
So right now they're showing.
The territory design of the road is that clear to you?
Going to show the building and then across the street they're showing the parking? It's just a way towards either idiot parking for the building or does it need a block area to the public parking to the building?
I think it was ready to start to decide what's the best.
What's the answer? You know, the roads that have the range.
The speed bump, that's a need of block area that is raised and clearly defined so that forces somebody to slow down and ride there.
There's four ways to stop. So for a sketch plan, who guys can do inside of the building? Okay. Use it. We're about to start with it. How many, what is it, 39,000 square?
39, yeah.
All right, I like the idea of what you're showing for the base around it. That adds to a whole lot.
Pretty good.
What's that?
Nice little bit.
Yeah, that's good. All right, anybody have any questions or concerns? Just for sketch plans, so you just got to deal with D E C and all that?
Yeah, I mean, all of it.
So looking around the room, so if you guys can come up with, have something to come up with a decision and a timeline, we can agree to it. I think that's what we need. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, guys, remember that.
Next day, the applicant's agenda is a couple of industries located at the 675 Porters Parkway. Applicant in Capital Industries, request a preliminary final site final approval along with a public hearing associated with the construction of Phase One, which is 100,000 square feet and a total of 300,000 square feet, a light manufacturing warehouse, a 25.6 acre lot located in a high intensity commercial district under section 269-11 of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening. Mike Curci from Cost of Engineering. This is Matt McKelfen from McKelfen Industries. Thank you for allowing us to come in front of your board. We were last in front of you a few months ago where we presented the project. Matt presented the overview of his company and what they do. Since then, I think the issues were, he coordinated the view of the seater and the wetland review. We did receive some additional P R C comments from town staff and we've subsequently revised the plans and resubmitted to address those comments. We did receive the no impact letter from the D E C relative to the wetlands, so we received that last week when we were, had to pass that along to Josh. You know, we did also hear from the previous time, Mr. Shaw, that we were in front of you, they were looking for some more architectural detail on that building. We did some additional architectural renderings.
Should we change that to the one you just gave me?
Most of those are in the submission. There's a couple additional ones in there just to reemphasize what we're trying to accomplish.
Should I say a little?
A lot more updates to it, again, this is.
Not a bar, right?
That's impressive.
It's a phase project, Phase One, I think I heard 100,000, but was applied for 120,000 square foot for the first phase, Phase 300,000 square foot overall. So that first phase being on the south side of the project and subsequent additions would be to the north. We also did make some revisions to the utilities. We did add a second stormwater management pond on the north side of the site to get some additional earth, also to prevent some low spots on that north area and hopefully allow any future development on that very north end on publishers to be able to utilize that for stormwater management as well. So we addressed all the comments from P R C, from the agency's water authority help department and the like, and with this board's approval, we're going to move forward with site work on this in probably the next month or two. So their team's ready to go and we'd be happy to answer any questions that this board had.
Okay, you submitted, I think it was April 15th, I think it was April 15th, you had some comments, you addressed all the comments and we have the latest edition of it.
And we just revised and resubmitted those back as well. They were, they were technical in nature, no, you know, major showstoppers or anything. And again, if there's any connection that this board has, any other comments going forward, we'd be happy to.
This is all primarily 99% all engineering detail.
Yeah, and I think most of the engineering's been sorted out to this point.
And I don't want to get involved in that part. Concern we have is the building, what's it going to look like, traffic, things like that, you should. You did a traffic study?
We did.
We completed that. What else was there? I think, it was probably the one that made that, wasn't it? Widen the entrance, some traffic trailer. Yeah, the truck to trailer.
Yep, yeah, we proposed a slight widening the entrance there. We could also propose a dedicated left-hand turn into the site, which will be part of the first phase.
We can open it, it's a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak in regard to this project? Sure. Go for it.
Hi, Tanya Davis. I might be behind the curve on this one, but it looks like you guys are calling it high-density commercial as the zoning. Yeah, that's what's on your plan. So I'm just wondering if you've, and again, I might be behind the curve, so I don't, again, my fault if I haven't been following the story.
What is it you specifically?
Yeah, no, my question is given that it's office park and this is a warehouse facility. It would be one of the uses that the town boards usually have to do a special use permit for, so I'm just wondering where we are in that process.
That was taking care of an issue with the town board.
Got it.
That was the first step of the process.
Okay, but it is office park, right?
It is zoned still that night, yeah, but that was a required town board.
Okay, and then, again, I'm just behind the curve, but that's, that's all. I just was wondering, and I just wanted to make sure that if it is office park, that you guys are still adhering to the lot coverage maximums?
We are.
Okay, first, thank you.
What's up? Okay, anyone else wish to say? The board, you there?
Hi.
I've looked at this thing a few times.
Okay, sorry, Tony. I got some.
Oh, okay.
Josh, can you zoom in to the entranceway area? So the vehicle turnaround that is shown on the fire truck, are you saying you have WB50 trucks there? Are you able to buy vehicle turnarounds for WB50 in that entranceways?
I believe we ran a WB62 on that as well. I don't know if the detail when that shows 50, I don't know, Matt, if you can WB50.
It's just showing a fire truck, it doesn't show standard operation vehicle coming in and out. My concern is just on Hard Road, north-south to In-N. Does the other side have to be widened too? Coming southbound going into the facility?
I don't believe any, any proposed trucks are proposed to come from the north side or all the truck traffic will come from the outdoor.
Anybody else, anybody?
So you seem to stop pavement, just short of the existing facility there. Any intention potentially to mill and pave all this Hard Road after construction?
That wasn't part of our plan, but I can talk to Matt, you know, it shouldn't be a major change to the scope to mill, just make that a nice uniform pavement. Have an issue with that? We already paved that portion by the entrance.
It's just after construction, you're going to be doing work, it's going to be in out traffic, you know, if it gets, the way to look nicer, it's just a continuous.
Yeah, a nice finished product, a bigger, yeah, then, you know, then we can put topping on everything and reenriching and make it all uniform.
I'm not sure if it will be part of your, but I guess this question's about Josh, you know, should there be a stop sign on that intersection there onto Hard Road, especially now with truck traffic? We proposed, should the stop sign and strike slot B on that intersection?
Yeah, that would be, that's a private road, so not be the town's responsibility.
We have no issue with that.
Josh, can, this is Kimba, utility client, and go to the front of the building. If you zoom in to what the auto line goes into the building, just want to get a clarification here. You have a combined system going in and then a combined system leaving the building. Is it going to be just hydrant dedicated going out or?
Yes, yeah, and we split the building for domestic fire sprinkler and then back out to the.
So that's just a correction that has to be made on drawings?
Yeah, we're coordinating with M E P, just trying to get everything sorted out where all the connections fly, but yeah, that's the intent.
Are you able to provide a mechanical room drawing, just showing how that transition?
I think that'll be part of the building permit process, but that will be not, again, we're, you know, meter backflow in an enclosure out of the road where it separates the public water.
And I was just surprised not to see profile views of the cemetery or stormlines. Is that something you guys can add?
Absolutely, I think that's, you know, something for construction. Again, there's no, there's nothing really out there in terms of conflicts with other utilities, but certainly can provide profile views for us.
And then I think my last question here, is that pond going in now in the back, do you have access going up to it for maintenance?
That was not a topic that was generated, but we certainly have no issue providing an access easement to the town of Webster for both ponds, knowing that they are going to be private, but in the event that town ever needed to give them, we would be renting easements for us.
I guess would it be just an easement or would it be also like a storm rattle to go back there and do maintenance?
You know, I think the intent is that that parking lot adjacent to it would be built and that would allow it to provide access. We're even certainly looking at that to make sure that if town staff need to get back there, put a gravel access road firm to the outlet structure, we can add that in to this part of the.
So Josh, does the town of Webster maintain a pond?
No. We would require a stormwater maintenance agreement, we would need the responsibility.
It would still be a good idea to add something there in case they need to hire a contractor to hog out the pond so it doesn't destroy the installation, so we can put that in the plans for sure.
So I heard we're putting in an access road to it for maintenance and then the volume of that pond, just want to make sure they're not at a U S Army Corps dam level or below it?
Or below the height for a dam access.
Right, and then the spillway that you have there, the discharge to it, you have indicating where it's going and just want to make sure that it's not impacting the neighboring.
We did have to look at that because, you know, everything has ranged north up through publishers, so we have a spillway and then a swale and then a dedicated secondary stormline to give that all to north, so it doesn't pond back.
There are some engineering things in there.
Well, a lot of, yeah, a lot of the stuff, actually, it's all engineering detail, that's why you have to have an engineer to look at that also. They have reviewed a lot of this already, so drainage and a lot of hours, whatever. Anybody else have any questions or concerns? All right, then we'll close the public hearing. We're done. All right, at the last, we, we actually, we made a motion, I believe, that we, particularly the agency, it's not me, this is the board that did, and without the third. lead agency, it's not me, this board did, and without thirty days, maybe it took probably forty-one of it, that's for sure. So it came back, thirty days are up, so we need to make a motion to take lead agency for the secret process. You can combine, can we combine that there? Do that right along with the motion? Okay. I suppose I'd be ready to comment. One second, I know. No, I close.
The previously agreed determiners of the type one actions are a motion for effective action. Town of Webster planning board consider request by Appleton and Felton Industries to construct a three hundred thousand square foot light manufacturing warehouse in twenty-five-point-six-five acre parcel, having E S P O number zero seven nine five zero six dash one dash two teen point one two three, located in eight seventy-five, publishers Parkway. The planning board determines that the proposed action is a type one action under Part six seventeen of the Safe Environment Act, part three. The planning board determine that the action is subject to single agency review pursuant to Part six seventeen point six of the Home Secretary, and that it is the most appropriate agency for making a determination of significance. The planning board therefore designates itself lead agency for the proposed action. The planning board has given consideration to a criteria for determining significance as set forth in section six seventeen point seven C one of the secret, and has one considered the information contained in the environmental assessment form part one dated January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, considered public campus directive, planning board during the public hearing, and made sixth, two thousand twenty-five, and three completed parts three of the environmental assessment form. Now therefore view resolved with the Town of Webster Planning Board hereby determines that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment for reasons set forth in the attached notice of determination of non-significance. Be it further resolved with the Town of Webster Planning Board authorized to take all eight actions reasonable necessary to follow any objective reason, and discharge the Town of Webster planning board's responsibility to lead agency for this action. Be it further resolved with the Town of Webster Planning Board based on the information and analysis of the reference according documentation and discussions of the actions of the Town of Webster Planning Board documented by the Minister's meeting, the proposed action will not resolve in a significant environmental impact. Be it further resolved with the Town of Webster Planning Board therefore makes determination of non-significance. Be it further resolved with the Town of Webster Planning Board based on the above reasons, issues of negative defamation, cause evidence of its determination.
Okay, we have a motion from the helpers, Roger, you move this on.
Sir.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Gardena.
Aye.
Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Fashani.
Aye.
Mr. Kersel.
Aye.
Mr. Gaskin.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Okay, I think before we, before we, I'd like the way you changed the building, that, that was probably my biggest hangover from Digmore was, you know, the parents of it. We should, we got to do, we should do, but we say actually had this incorporated into a final drawing sheet all at one. I'm okay with moving forward with preliminary. I think we still need to just fine tune some of the miscellaneous things. Engineering's okay with the, the, your answer, so to speak. And I, it's okay with the board, I, I don't want to drag you out for another month. And if you can get this stuff in soon enough and meet the requirements for Josh, I'd be willing to say, and I think the board would agree, they have another meeting in a couple weeks, the final drawings in front of us, whatever they have.
Yeah, we can do that.
You have working with you guys?
We did submit the updated elevations as part of the street's contact.
Yeah, that way, that way these are the maps, the sheet that are incorporated, going into the drawings.
Right, we can, we can certainly make that work, yeah. I guess two weeks, I don't think will, will kill us.
You can get the stuff in, I mean, you got it all, but.
Yeah, I think we, we already submitted, we submitted most of those renderings when we were submitted revised plans.
There's a little separate rendering, if you can just clear it all in, right in one of the sheets, right in your drawings, you know.
Yeah.
I think that would, there's fifty more slides on there, all.
Yeah, we, we can certainly make those incorporated into the final approval plans that, if that's what you're looking for prior to this, or being able to issue final approval. Or if, if you wanted to condition it, we can make it so that those are part of the record submitted in the final plans.
A lot of what you have in front of you right now was, was part of the submission. We just had a couple of updates that I want to make sure you saw. I don't see that file there.
Yeah, it, I think, yeah.
The elevation.
Engineering items, it would be nice to incorporate because the final sets, when the board votes on this, a final.
All right, let's do that, let's, let's, let's do a preliminary, that's okay, and then in two weeks we can get the final, we've got everything incorporated.
Yeah, we can turn everything back around.
All right, let's do that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for preliminary, site plan for the town of Webster, subject to all P R C cabinets, subject to all credit for the Town of Webster, subject to all nine hundred and thirty cabinets, subject to determination of C P A in the course of the areas. All improvements shall be constructed according to the specification of the Town of Webster. All work construction be in accordance with the specification and regulations set forth by the Town of Webster. Site workers should be compliant with standards of the Town of Webster. Compliant with all requirements of any state, county, or town agency. Address drainage, lighting, sanding, landscape, baffling, drainage, and sewer storage. We've got the landscape, earthscape, mesh waiting as a type of development, everybody works in this side of that. Final landscape mention, we're assuming central landscape earthscape. Our pools are subject to drawing under Project nine six four nine.
Okay, I think you, where'd you want, you may have a spoke stop sign, you want this here also?
You have W. A truck being used for the access movement, just to make sure that the intersection works with a A T Miller, a stop sign there, just for safety, stop on Hart Road. And then the, the road going up to the pond.
You'd also know the profiles from the.
Profiles, yeah, should be engineering's call.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion, you have a second.
Second. Mr. Malta.
Aye.
Mr. Gardena.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Kersel.
Aye.
Mr. Gaskin.
Aye.
Mrs. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Fashani.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so then let's hold, and then, is that okay with all you folks?
Yeah.
We do that in a couple of weeks?
Yeah.
We get their stuff in, that way we got a complete set of drawings, they're ready to get the engineering, everything is in a good shape. All right, thanks a lot, fellas. Nice job, we can go with the agenda, very impressive.
Next item on agenda is Sierra Trading Post considered a nine-point-four pole. The applicant, Kim Corrigan, Weddins Food Market Incorporated, request a sketch plan review associated with enclosing a portion of former Chase Pickens outdoor space to create a new tenant space on a twenty-eight-point-seven acre lot located in an eighteen C high-intensity commercial district on the section two sixty-nine dash five of code of Town of Webster.
Do anything, I do the files from the cottage engineering, and I have Kim Corrigan.
Corrigan, sorry.
From Weddins. So the, for sketch plan review, there is a, the proposed project is enclosing that existing outdoor display area that was once a part of Chase Pickens project, the building would enclose nineteen thousand square feet of that for retail for Sierra Trading Post. The rest of the canopy would remain in the rear of the property, it would be incorporating a trash compactor and a recessed loading dock. And the utilities, we're utilizing the Hobby Lobby wall currently and the southern wall for the outdoor display area, so it fits within that footprint of the outdoor display area. The utilities are private, most of them have been stunted during the development of the plaza. No P R C had comments about the truck access that we had coming off of Rachel. We are in works of coming down from either the north end through the Weddins property. Yeah, right behind the plaza, maybe a turn within the back of the building. And there's also an option of looking to come up one-four up to Ridg Road and certainly down through Rachel, just leave that, that turn radius at that point. The building elevations were submitted as part of this package, it's a isolating modern facade, their branding.
What do we have to do with the interior? Do you have to turn that floor up?
So the.
All your mechanicals?
The concept now is, it's all concrete currently, they're going to level it. Obviously, there were floor drains, you probably can see it in there. So it was all pitched to the center, so it's, the high points are on the perimeter and it's going to be leveled for that portion. And then we will be rerouting the storm, the trench drain to the rear, there's a sand for a storm drain back there, we've already looked at the drainage patterns from when this was developed, new volumes. The only utility running through there would be sanitary out the front, we have to cut through the floor.
You should, you should show me a picture of the, you know, your Sierra?
Yeah.
Kind of looks a little different.
They used to have an orange facade, is that what you're referencing?
Yeah.
Right, they now switched to more of the white cream colored facade.
Got an orange side, it's got stone wall on the side. What's the place, the, oh, Weddins is called Brick anyway, it's right?
Weddins, that's correct, correct, yeah.
So this, you've got the lower part, what is that, what's the weight part of this?
Yeah, I don't have the details from the architect, so it's where, you know, conceptual level of what it is, but they've been using, I mean, with construction these days, you know, kind of fascia board or cardboard or something like that.
I think, I think it's fine, if, if there's a way to just dress it down, there's a lot of white there to look at, you know, whereas the plant itself is pretty broken up and designed nicely, features inside, and you do something just to dress it up a little bit, that's what we're concerned about.
Okay, we'll bring that back to the architect.
Okay. Anything else, what's the color of the sign? Well, it's, it's like an orangeish color. Yeah, that, that's.
It was like a.
Yeah, pretty much the same. Anybody have any concerns for this project? Go with it.
Oh, I, yes.
It's a nice sort of.
Utilizing, it's, it's great.
If I could ask, in, in the back, so, you know, the Sierra portion looks like it's going to be redone, but there's a portion still in the back that is a former Chase Pickens, what's, what's going to happen with that portion of the building? That portion of the building is going to remain, the canopy, it's structural for that roof, the back wall, and there's some egress doors from the Hobby Lobby to that area.
There's actually only a couple of comments, general comments, tractor trailers are required to stay in the appropriate lanes and making the turn from Rachel Drive and the plaza you were awarded anyways.
Yeah.
Any others, all the utilities are going to be private, which is going to be private property stuff.
Correct.
Any concerns, okay, did I, any concerns on it? You guys have any?
Just a, that's a consideration for snow storage, it's a very tight area and that's a burn there, so I'm not sure we're going to store the snow over time. So, yeah, with, with Weddins Plaza's, you know, if they hired a contractor and you see the big amounts out in front, so it will be groomed out there and put out to where no one utilizes or.
All right, I guess they, you know, so, next time you're in.
All right, thank you very much.
What I cited on tonight's agenda, Lockwood Electric, located in six thirty-three Vastal Road, the applicant of La Lockwood, who is requesting sketch time to re-assess the construction, eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six square foot, multi-tenant, post-frame style building on a one-point-four acre lot located in an industrial district on the section two six nine dash five of the code of the Town of Webster.
Good evening, evening members of the board. My name is Ian Cookman, I'm with McMahon Group, I'm here with La Lockwood, owner of Lockwood Industries Electric. We're here for sketch plan application for the new office location and operations facility for Lockwood Electric, in addition to visible space for a tenant to be determined, garage space, and then dog daycare as well. The site is a former homestead farming agricultural residential site, it's not a zoned industrial. I worked before the, the town board last week for application of industrial use permit and referral to the planning board here tonight. La Lockwood is proposing to build a post-frame style, kind of whole barn style structure for their operations, which I believe we've submitted architecturals as part of our application by GLA architects. The site has been mostly demolished from its original homestead application. What remains is a couple of accessory structures, one of which is going to be incorporated as part of this build-out for the dog daycare, substantial post-frame whole barn addition is going to be mostly for Lockwood Electric. And the parking space is going to be substantially increased for Lockwood Electric fleet of vans and work vehicles in addition to employee parking. Lockwood Electric is currently operating out of five-twenty Salt Road, so a long-time Webster resident and looking to stay in the community. The application process is long for us, like I said, we worked before the town board last week, we worked for the planning board today for sketch plan application. We're next to the zoning board of the fields for various of the buffer requirements, and then we'll be back here a couple more times for preliminary, final application, and then finally back home to the town board for the issuance of industrial permit along with a special permit application for the dog daycare. With that said, the goal is to minimize total disturbance on the site to under an acre, so it's a, it's a small-scale construction. acre, so it's a, it's a small-scale construction operation, uh, that will yield, um, substantial dividends to the community in, uh, in the success of the business. Um, I wanted to, uh, see what comments the board had, um, I think we jumped it on a little bit, we've prepared and submitted pretty substantial site plans, um, with a substantial amount of design incorporated, a lot more than what you typically see on the sketch plan application, um, but we do want to take the board's considerations as we move over to the zoning board and the remainder of the planning board application process. So, at this moment, I'll open it up for any questions.
Are any variances required?
There are, there is a variance required.
You got it, yeah, or...
Not yet, that'll be the next process for us.
What would that be for, sir?
So, for industrial zone, um, parcels have an industrial setback requirement buffer requirement.
Which is?
Uh, a little bit more, um, than what we're asking for, and it includes not only the building, but also the parking area, so the edge of pavement is slightly infringed on that buffer requirement. So, we'll be seeking a modest amount of relief from that. And I think the, the intent of that requirement is, most industrial sites in Webster are large parks, you know, like Sierra Park, um, where it's a little bit more buffer between those large parcels, this is a much smaller parcel, it's less than an acre and a half, uh, so I think it would be realistic to ask for that, that relief from the board.
Your, your drainage is...
Yeah, so the challenge with this site is that we're tying into an existing structure, so our finished floor elevation is pretty well established, uh, it's a relatively flat site as is, so we don't have a lot of options stormwater-wise. If you're trying to sheep blow everything into that relatively flat swell, it's gonna have a perforated under-drain, it's gonna drain into our, uh, into the storm sewer out on Basket Road.
Yeah. You know dumpster enclosure, that would be near the front?
Yeah, we chose, uh, the front, um, within that, uh, dog fenced-in area, um, to avoid the lesser than whitemans blowing odor into the operations of Lockwood.
A little premature, but just, when you get to that point, don't just throw some up like that, make it look decent.
I live directly across the street.
That's probably a good reason to do it.
And I'm gonna make sure it's a nice place, for sure.
Sounds good. That's the concern, because you're the neighbor, so, yeah. Alright, you got any questions or concerns on this?
So you mentioned they used to be agricultural use, and I noticed this with the year of pulls from both, one thing that double check, I didn't see, I didn't see the, there are county ag, districts on this area, that have been used for a long time, but that district has never been resolved. So, just verify that the parcel itself is not something, uh, district.
Double check that, thank you. You gotta double check that, and this.
Yeah, there's even a couple of dumpster parks that have, right in the, the ag district, and I was wondering if it's...
Yeah, with that said, I mean, we're on the industrial side of Baskin Road, so everything around us, we've got basin management right next door to us, across the street, we do have residents, so we are, um, substantiating, uh, buffer.
But that, that's why I mentioned this, this stuff.
Yeah.
Put them in some place thirty years ago, and they've, they've had them in user agriculture for years and years, because this still exists, it's sort of subject to different programs.
Josh, are you aware of?
I don't believe, I don't believe this property is within a magistrate, but we can help double check that.
Okay, thank you.
And with this property being on Basket Road, we were required to refer it to Monroe County, and I know that that's also something that they take with the path as well, once we...
We can inform that, we can, thank you.
Alright, that's something we can check out anyways, right?
Yeah.
Will you come back? Maybe you can answer to that.
First things first, get our variance, okay?
Maybe that's right.
Ian, I just have one more thing, uh, indicated a fence in the R, in the RTC easement, utility easement, just wanna make sure that, that is allowed in that easement, the fence that you guys reported.
Okay.
And then, um, I guess just out of curiosity, interior, the architectural plan showed storage, um, assuming you're not dealing with like transformers, storage, any kind of chemicals inside, because it's right next to a buddy to the dog area, does it have a fireproof wall between the, the two, uh, components of, of, uh, use, I guess?
So, I'm sorry, yeah, hearing you, I did a hard time hearing you, but you're concerned about the storage?
Yeah, I'm assuming you're not storing transformers or any kind of chemicals inside that, you know, fire concern, just between the dog use and then your storage use.
Correct, no, the storage use is maybe, um, for H&amp;L Incorporated that's owning this place to store the stuff to maintain the property.
Okay.
And, um, that kind of stuff, nothing, nothing industrial or anything like that. Nothing more than you would find in your garage.
The overall site, once you're completed, there's no outdoor storage, right?
I'm sorry?
No outdoor storage?
Uh, no, okay, everything should be inside, the only thing outside would be a parking lot.
Yeah, none of that. Sounds good.
So the draft secret does indicate, uh, there are wetlands or other regulated water bodies on the parcel, so you're worried you have to start that whole process, and wetland regulation as soon as possible. Yeah, according to the secret form, if they identify that the wetlands are all regulated areas, and if because of that, we're gonna start on the path of the jurisdiction of determination when we move, we're gonna stick what, what like, we're gonna, you start that now, see if it'll bring up on it.
Okay, yep.
You can check in to that, I guess?
Well, good, take care, have a good one.
Alright, you know what, before we go, Josh, if they're going to the zoning board, do you feel there's any issues with that, or should we...
No, but I think the variances that are being requested are not really, not certain with me.
So, you're gonna... If I was thinking, if it was questionable, you know...
I mean, the board could provide a letter of support if they were able to...
After you, fellas, right? Sure. You wanna send a letter to the zoning board? Wait, extra, I didn't know that. Letter of recommendation from this board to the zoning board? You okay with that?
Yeah.
Alright, we will do that, just send the letter to the zoning board.
Yeah, everything helps, I appreciate it, everything.
Yeah, that way, sure, we'll know a little bit.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks for coming on.
Thank you.
See you, good luck.
Alright, that's the business. We're gonna make a motion to approve the meeting minutes by April 3rd, 2024. You have a motion to sit on our favor?
Yeah.
Okay, we're glad this was accepted, and thanks for calling in, and I hope this...
Thank you, everybody.